All right, colleagues, we are back. The next item for discussion is a presentation regarding the contract amendments with vendors for the Community Trauma Response Services. This item was originally set for the AEO Committee meeting last Monday, August 11th, but was moved for discussion to this committee. I'll call up Director Amanda Harrington for that presentation.
All right, good afternoon, council members. Amanda Harrington, Director of Neighborhood Safety. I'm here today to ask for approval of contract amendments for 11 Community Trauma Response contracts to continue our work keeping communities safe after violence and trauma has occurred. I want to briefly provide some context on these services. I know this isn't the first time that you've heard of this, but it may have been a while. And for folks who are in community watching online, the Community Trauma Response is a restoration service under the model of the Safe and Thriving Communities Report. In the public health terms, it's a tertiary violence prevention service focused on those who have been impacted by violence. The organizations offer an array of services, including trauma-informed care, mental health services, and culturally-specific services, as well as community outreach, education, and training. I believe it's important to reflect on the impact of the services and what they have done for our community so far. About 34,500 community members have been served by these contracts to date. This chart shows a distinction between direct and indirect services. Just a little definition: direct services are those provided to individuals. They're intentional personalized interactions with individuals or small groups to address their needs. So, an example might be mentoring, case management, or small group facilitation, counseling, things like that. Whereas, an indirect service are those services or activities that reach individuals without that personalized interaction. And so, that might be public events, passing out flyers, social media campaigns, or general resource distribution. I also think it's important to reflect on the value of the city's investment in these services so far. For every $1,000 that we invest in this work, about 16 people are helped. And that obviously changes depending on if you're talking about a direct service or an indirect service. Somebody who's getting a direct service, for example, needs more support and would get more resources than a large group that's attending a community event. To make the amendment recommendations that are before you, we used a two-tier approach. First, we determined eligibility for more funding based on the reporting history under the existing contracts. Only organizations that have submitted all their monthly reports were eligible for an amendment. Any contractor missing a monthly report would have been deemed ineligible. Second, we use contractor data, budget expenditure data, and real-world service cost estimates to determine contractor efficiency. The process balances contractors' community reach and equitable spending. Let's go a little bit more into the step two of the process. To ensure fairness and accuracy, we grouped all programs based on the type of services they provided, so the direct or indirect, as outlined in their contract scope of service. We then calculated each program's cost efficiency by comparing the volume of services delivered or those outputs to the amount spent down on the contract. This helped us to understand the value each program provides per city dollar invested. And different programs serve in different ways. Case management may serve 40 people over time, while a community event might reach 400 people. So, by normalizing the cost per unit of service, we can compare them fairly. And this helps us to appreciate the different approaches to community healing and honors each contractor's unique role. We used each contractor's own data to figure out how big their piece of the funding pie should be relative to how much they actually spent. That way, decisions were based on what they've actually done. And then, to make things fair, we made sure that no one contractor could get more than 25% of the total money that was available, so that we could spread funding across more providers. The one exception to that is Greater Minneapolis Council of Churches. That's funded by an earmark for Midtown Phillips neighborhood that was supposed to address public health approach to violence in that area. All of this data analysis led to funding recommendations that are fair, data-based, and reflect both performance and community needs. The current contracts terminate at the end of August, and so approval by city council now will ensure that there is no lapse in service. This table shows the contractors recommended for amendments and what services they provide and what parts of the city they support. I'm not going to read this, but wanted to make sure that it was included in the presentation so that it was available to each of you and to all of our community members. Lastly, I know everyone is concerned about how we collect ongoing data. All contracted organizations fill out the same smart sheet form each month. While each contractor has their own unique work plan and approach to community healing, they all focus on providing services to participants. So, the metrics that you see on the screen are shared across all programs and used to standardize reporting. I want to conclude by reiterating that these recommendations are based on data and reflect performance and community need. That concludes my presentation, and I stand available for questions.
Thank you. I don't see anybody on cue. I'll first pass it to Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm really glad to see the monthly contractor report form. I think that's good. We've talked for so long about tracking effectiveness of violence prevention and violence intervention and violence interruption programs. My hope is that mandated reporting will help us fine-tune our delivery of services and really pinpoint the best uses of our funding. Earlier in the presentation, you spoke about award determination as being based on these monthly reports. Did we have, in your estimation, enough data so far? Is it about one year in to really impact these recommendations for contract amendments?
Thank you for the question, Chair Chavez, Councilmember Pomisano. Most of these contracts have been in place since September 2024, so we do have about a year's worth of data. At the time we did the analysis, it was June or July, so we did not have a full calendar year of data, but we used the data that was available to us because the contracts weren't in place before September of last year.
Yeah. I am, I think we all are interested in making data-backed decisions. Is the reporting that you spoke about in line with recommendations from Cure Violence Global Standards in terms of performance in contracts?
Chair Chavez, Councilmember Pomisano, Cure Violence does not advise on Community Trauma Response contracts. Their focus is specifically on Minneapolis or violence interrupters, and so we did not ask them for input on how we evaluated these contracts.
On this one, thank you. Was this process done blind, meaning that you didn't see who was the actual, you know, who was the actual small business operating here, but you were able to do it without seeing who the purveyor of these services was?
Through the chair, I will actually have to get back to you on that question. I know our data analysis team worked hard on this, but I don't know if they did a blind analysis or not.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I don't have any questions for discussion. I just wanted to request at this point that we separate 3.9 and 3.11 for a separate vote and discussion once we get there.
Vice Chair Chowdhury has moved 3.9 and 3.11 for a separate vote and discussion. Next up, we have Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need to separate 3.2 for a separate vote also, but I would like to speak, I just wanted to, I think it's gonna land with 9 and 11 also, but just overall, you know, these trauma grants have been a lifeline for North Minneapolis, in particular Ward 4. Because we don't have Minneapolis contracts, I've been assured over and over again that these extensions would be the support and the help that we needed on Penn and Laurie, Laurie and Logan, 35th and Penn, because these grants are specific to the needs of that community. This isn't about the Minneapolis contracts, which are preventative methods. This is addiction. This is housing resources. This is healthcare needs. And so, I'm really hoping that we get the grants passed that are helping Northsiders. Again, we're gonna speak to 9 and 11, and I know those groups, and I know people have problems with a person in those groups, but these contracts are not about one person. These contracts are about a lot of people who are employed in North Minneapolis, who live in North Minneapolis, who show up for this community in a way that is very different than some of these other grants. So, I'm really hoping we have a good discussion about what I'm gonna be faced with here when the decisions are made about 9 and 11.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Cashman. If you're gonna speak to item number 9 and 11, or item number 2, I am moving those for a separate vote, and I wanna get the ones that aren't being brought up to discussion to a vote, and then we can discuss the rest.
Sure. I will move approval of the rest.
Oh, perfect, great. So, there's been approval.
But I do have a question for you, Director Harrington, which is about the geographic distribution of these services. Do you have a sense of which are where, which are being, you know, which communities are impacted by all of these in a geographic sense?
Chair Chavez, Councilmember Cashman, the slide six, thank you, does show the ward areas where each of the contracts currently serves. We know there are a few wards that are missing from that, but I believe that we have most of the highest-impacted wards accounted for by the contracts that are listed.
So, just to be clear, there's geographic distribution across Northside, Southside, Downtown, and all the areas that need more help in these areas?
That's correct, yes. There are definitely Southside, Northside, Downtown. I see wards 1, 6, 4, 5. The ones that are missing are, I'm gonna miss, 3, 13, there might be another one that aren't done here.
11.
11, thank you. But I think we have most of the wards accounted for and a pretty broad distribution of the services.
Thank you. So, yes, with the most, I'll just move approval of all except 2, 9, and 11.
Seeing no further discussion on motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Great. Next up, we'll have item number 2. Councilmember Vitah, would you like to speak on that item or just have a separate vote?
We can vote. I just need to recuse myself.
For sure. Cool. Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, it gives me pause as to the ability of an organization to provide trauma response services if they themselves have been the cause of community trauma. I've been hearing that as feedback in regards to the contracts with New Salem. Can you tell me the status of allegations of the shootout between two of their workers?
Councilmember Pomisano, word on item number 2.
This is just the Black Business Enterprises Fund?
We're gonna talk about separately, but we were calling you first next, if that's okay with you.
Thank you, and that is my question.
Perfect, great. So, item number 2, Councilmember Vitah wants to have a separate vote, so she could recuse herself. Is there any discussion on item number 2? And this is 3.2. 3.2.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Jenkins, are you speaking on item number 2? Councilmember Jenkins.
Oh, yeah. I wanna. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm just curious as to, I mean, clearly, they've already had a contact with Black Business Enterprises, and I'm just not clear on the services that they provide.
Chair Chavez, Councilmember Jenkins, thank you for the question. The name of the organization does not reflect exactly what they do. They have actually been very instrumental in helping individuals who have been victims of crime. They've taken a number of referrals, actually, from our community navigators that work with police. And they do a lot of immediate intervention as well as ongoing trauma response, so particularly with people who are at risk or have been involved in human trafficking and abuse. So, they are in very kind of high-stakes situations where they're interacting with community members.
All right. Thank you for that insight.
Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, Chair. I had a similar question. I'm trying to understand what Black Business Enterprises is doing specifically in Ward 4. I've heard of like their event center or whatever, but I've never heard of direct service. I've heard of them passing out food in South Minneapolis, but never any direct services in Wards 4 or Ward 5. But I'm gonna speak on behalf of my ward. I would love a memo of specific work that they've done in Ward 4 and with whom, please.
If the clerks, the question is, what work is the Black Business Enterprises Fund doing in Ward 4? All even, since it's Ward 4, 5, 6, 9, 10, 12, it might just be important to not only focus on Ward 4, but give an update on the rest of the wards. All right, that has been noted. Next up, good? Next up, we have Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Chair. I actually was confused why Ward 7 wasn't listed on this, because their headquarters is in Ward 7, Black Business Enterprises, and I've actually been able to visit with them, and I know that they're helping a lot of young women who have been victims, as you said, of domestic violence at their location, especially through healing through the arts, which I really appreciate. So, I'll move this item for approval.
And seeing no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Aye.
Wonsley.
Aye.
Rainville.
Aye.
Vitah.
Abstain.
Ellison is absent. Osman.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Chukti.
Aye.
Koski is absent. Pomisano.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Aye.
And Chair Chavez.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes and one abstention.
And the motion carries. Next up, we have item 3.9 and 3.11, and I'll first pass it to Councilmember Pomisano.
Mr. Chair, those were the questions that I had to Director Harrington.
There we go. Chair Chavez, Councilmember Pomisano, would you mind, please, reiterating your questions?
Sure. It was, this contract gives me pause. We've heard a lot of feedback about this contract, and I'm curious about the status of allegations from a few months ago of workers in this organization actually being part of a shootout, like using guns in the community that they were there to serve.
Chair Chavez, Councilmember Pomisano, I can't speak to criminal investigation or prosecution. I am privy to the same information that everybody else sees in the media, but I can say that my understanding is the individuals that were involved in that work were not involved in the two organizations that we're talking about. There are a number of different organizations that tend to be conflated, and the two that we're talking about for the Community Trauma Response were not involved in the criminal activity that you, I believe, are referring to.
Thank you. That's important to me.
Next up, we have Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Thank you. I appreciate us taking this as a separate item. I will share, I have pause for these contracts as well. For me, I do not believe that continuing these contracts is in line with the mission and values of the City of Minneapolis, specifically around creating a welcoming city, stewardship of our taxpayer dollars. I, I understand that one individual can't be, be the reason for a broad brush, but when that individual is the leadership of the organizations that we're looking at that has posed threats of violence to councilmembers in this chamber, and then also comments that have been perceived as homophobic and are homophobic, that not only impacts councilmembers up here, but has impacted our community broadly, has impacted our LGBTQIA community. We also know that we are in a moment in time where political violence is something that is at front of mind for the nation, but also our community in Minneapolis and in Minnesota. And I do not take those threats lightly that were made, not within these chambers specifically, but also outside of these chambers on a Facebook Live, so it's very well documented. And again, I'll go back, I do not think that that's in line with the mission, values, and stated goals of the City of Minneapolis. And as a councilmember, I cannot vote for these contracts. And as an individual person, I do not think that this is the right thing for us to do, and our community is watching to see how the City of Minneapolis, specifically this council, deals with this business today. So, I would like to make a motion to deny item 3.9 and 3.11, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Next up, we have Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, Chair. I do understand where some councilmembers are on this, but what I don't understand is what is the expectation, again, for North Minneapolis? We've lost everything this summer. We've lost everything with no one trying to help fix it. I'm pleading with departments and department heads to get resources. These trauma grants, I mean, behind the scenes, the conversations I'm having, the work that I'm trying to get done for us to get the resources we need on the North Side, because we've lost a huge amount of work that needs to be done around violence interruption service, around trauma response. I mean, the amount of calls, the livability issues that we're facing. Now, I know this slide says that those two groups are in Wards 5. By definition, they're on the South Side of Laurie, but that's the divider between Wards 4 and 5. So, they're not on, in just Ward 5. They're in Ward 4 also. These are not groups of people who stick to this chart. They go where they need to go. They pay attention to the hotspots. They get data, the things we're asking for, to make sure that the service needs are met. And without these services, we have nothing. We have no one there. There, I'm not saying they've done everything, but they're working. They're trying to get us there. And now, we're losing everything. I could be more open to having this conversation had it not been extending these grants. If this was the beginning of a term of a grant, I get it. Like, they never get to start doing the work, but they're continuing to do what they've already set up. The worst thing we can do in this community is just take it away, just pull the services out. And I get that there's something coming up next, clearly, to offset what this vote is gonna be, you know, these groups, but I don't know that these groups that have been, you said to us that the reason why these groups were selected was based on the services they've completed, completed reporting, and things that have previously been done. I just can't say for certain that the other groups you have in here are capable of doing the work that these two groups are doing. These are people who live in this, like literally live blocks away. The woman who leads the trauma response, I'd never know the difference between the two. But one of the women who leads either New Salem or Salem, Inc., lives in the Cleveland neighborhood, is the person I rely on to go get young women, as young as 12 years old I've seen out there, with my own eyes. We've put in a van and taken to shelter. I've seen her do it. Her and her team have done the most amazing things. These young women can't always walk up to a man. These services are filled with men. They don't feel safe, and now we're just pulling them away because of, I don't, I don't even understand anymore what this is about. When services are needed for a community, like, I'm tired of begging. I've been begging for months for my community to be seen. I represent Ward 4, not Ward 5. We are two different places. If I tell somebody Broadway, they understand that. They don't understand Laurie. They don't understand where I represent. I am sick of this. We need help. I've been begging for help since this department was stood up. I've been begging, "Help us. We have special needs." We have three areas that are problematic, and guess what? We don't need extra police in there. We need trauma response. We need violence interruption. We need housing resources. We need Narcan. It's addiction. It's not criminalizing people. And when we get services snatched away from us like this, guess what? It's worse. It's worse. The calls are gonna go up, the number of people you see hanging out, it's gonna get worse and worse when you get services snatched away. We got those Minneapolis dollars taken away, and guess what? It's worse. And people don't wanna admit it, but that's what it is. I know what direct services look like, 'cause I'm out there two times a day, if I need to be, at least once. Everybody on those blocks know who I am, and I know who they are. They're people to me, and they deserve what the city has to offer. And we shouldn't just push on them who we want to be on them. They should be able to get services from people they trust. These relationships are about building trust. We're taking that away from the people who are out there, who are used to familiar faces. I know how it works. You know the people who are showing up with the resources. You know who to talk to, who to feel safe with. It's gonna take us years to recreate that, to make them safe with people, to get them connected. It's not okay. It's not fair. It's not okay that we keep doing this. Like, these services are needed. This is not a necessity, I mean, I want, this is a necessity. We need this. On Laurie and Logan, Laurie and Penn, and 35th and Penn, we need it. We house people out of encampments on 35th and Penn, and now they need our resources. Money that we allocated to an organization housed these people, and now we have them there with nothing. And we're saying, "We don't like this group or this person or whatever, so you gotta just pick whoever, we gotta give you whoever." That's not okay. This is about relationships. This work is deep in relationship. There's a trust element here that we're missing as a council. You don't just walk up to strangers and say, "I need help." You gotta feel good about who you're going to for help. You gotta feel comfortable, and that's what these organizations do. Regardless of how I feel about people, there's people who attack me on and off the dais all the time, and they come before this council and I vote for them, 'cause I understand they're committed to the work. They might not like me as the elected, I'm cool with that, but they may do a great thing for this community. And that's what my job is here, is making sure that this community gets the services it deserves. And what we keep saying to this area in particular, I will not and I cannot speak for anywhere else, but I know the losses I keep taking in Ward 4 are a direct attack on that community, and it feels ugly. It feels terrible to have to keep seeing what we're building decline on a daily basis. I've committed to working on this for years. I've went through all these transitions with this department, everything, feeling hopeful that we are gonna continue to build, and we just keep getting knocked down in this particular area, and it's not okay. And I cannot keep looking at us do this to this part of our city. It's not okay. I'm never gonna be okay with this. These people, they deserve what we have to offer, just like everybody else, and I'm gonna stand on, you can't just throw somebody in there. That's just not okay. You can't just say, "Well, I'm gonna reallocate." I want the money. I'm gonna vote for the money to be reallocated, but what I know I'm not gonna get out of this is security. But what I know I'm not gonna get out of this is security. I'm not gonna get a commitment from the people that they get from people who they trust and who they know care about them. I know those young girls who are used to seeing women's faces, even when they're not ready. 'Cause that's the other thing. You gotta be there when somebody's ready. And when you change who's there, they're no longer ready. Because a lot of them getting ready is about the person who shows up every day for them and ensuring them that, "I'm here for you, and I'm gonna make this happen for you." So I'm gonna vote for the transition 'cause I, I feel this is gonna fail. So I'm gonna vote for the transition and whoever gets the money. But I know we failed this community by doing that. I know we're losing a, a lot of young girls, as young as 12 years old, who are addicted and out there on those streets who need help, who I've had to take in myself. Because the woman that, I don't know which one it is, Salem, Inc. conducer, I don't know the difference, but I know who she is, and I know how powerful she is when she goes out there specifically looking for people and the difference she makes in their lives. I know about those six young ladies that she helped last year, and I follow up with them. Just saw one on National Night Out, looking fantastic, and grateful that she had somebody that came to her and said, "How can I help you? What can I do?" That's lost now. We have to rebuild that. And it's not worth it to me. If we lose one person out there, it's not worth this to me. Because I know what we've built out there, and I know it can keep going, and it'll get better and better and better the more we invest in it and the more people become familiar with those areas.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I wanna just make a comment that I think North Side deserves services. Like everyone else, they need all the resources they can get. I'm here to help that and, and vote for services that can have an effect on their lives. But we're here back having the same conversation with this organization or the individual that's leading it. We have already said no. But the administration is back recommending the same organization who does not line up with our value. That individual has made a lot of comments that hurt people, that can create violence. He came to the city of Minneapolis, stood right there and said, "Come behind the desk and see what'll happen to you." Told me that. He went on live and say, "The Latino council member, the Somali, he's a specifically the Somali council member, does not like black people." And you sending him to Ward six right now, xenophobic individual who is creating a language that can create violence. And we know the history of the East Africans and African Americans, early 2000. I grew up in, in, in Twin Cities. That is not a value that we carry. Administration needs to do better. They need to go back on the table, look at the effect that this can have, and select different services, providers who can do way better job than this. Why are we sticking on the same individual we say no to? I have no problem absolutely giving more resource to North Side at all. But this is not okay. So the question actually goes back to the administration. Why? Why are we going back to this individual that some council members and included me have expressed? I'm not getting, I'm not gonna get into the other things that has been reported, but what I experienced, or my colleague Jason Chavez's experience, is, is hurtful. And he's coming back to Ward nine and Ward six. That is the service he's gonna provide services to? A same individual that has a value, that's xenophobic way of talking to? So I would absolutely would not support. And I will tell you, administration, shame on you if I bringing this back to us when we already say no. Thank you.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I did wanna just get clarification on a couple of things, Director Harrington, before making some comments. I just read the Administration Enterprise Oversight Committee report just for updates around GBI, or, sorry, yes, the 2025 Group Violence Intervention Services. Were being asked to approve two contracts, one with Youth Conservation, Inc., and then also with Westbury Consulting. So I just wanted to get clarity. Do you know which zones those groups would be providing services to?
Chair Chavez, Councilmember Wonsley, the, and just to make it clear for everybody who's watching, GBI is different from the Community Trauma Response. GBI model is not specifically by zones. The, the model is much more fluid because we, we need to make sure that the youth or the adults who are engaging in those programmings feel safe and don't feel threatened by potentially people who they have issues with. And so they're not aligned with a specific zone. They cover the entirety of our city.
And there's no funding being stripped from those services?
In fact, we're asking for additional money to go to the services to provide funding for client support.
Okay, great. And then I believe a couple of weeks ago, we also approved additional vendors for Minneapolis, too, because that was a concern earlier around stripping of a service for North Minneapolis and wanted to make sure that there was a resolicitation so that, yeah, that community would not have to go without those services. Did that ever get reconciled?
Chair Chavez, Councilmember Wonsley, I believe you're referring to the request for approval of a contract for two additional zones on the north side with Restoration, Inc. My understanding is that passed through all of the committees and bodies of council. I had not checked recently to say where we were at with the mayor's signature, but that was the piece that we were waiting on before procurement can start to route those contracts for signatures.
Awesome. And then three of the organizations that's, were being asked to consider on the Community Trauma Response, you know, contracts. Three of those are providing services to North Minneapolis. Is that correct?
Chair Chavez, Councilmember Wonsley, according to the chart that I had put up, a Mother's Love Initiative works on the north side. We also have Black Business Enterprise Fund. Change Starts With Community also serves the north side. Neighborhood Health Source also is in Ward four, and then the two contracts that we're currently speaking about.
Thank you. So just wanted to make sure. I know Councilmember Cashman followed up around earlier, just geographic distribution of resources, making sure that there was that consideration in the administration or proposal of these contracts. And it seems like there were. And also just getting clarity that some of the other programs that are targeted towards keeping our community safe, those are also being directed towards North Minneapolis that do complement the work of like Community Trauma Response.
I will just add as a point of clarification to what you just said, that when I say the north side, I am speaking broadly, and I'm not being specific about Ward four versus Ward five. But it is accurate to say that other organizations on this list that you have already voted to approve do provide services in the North Minneapolis area.
Thank you. That said, I do wanna shift comments to the motion that's before us that Councilmember Chowdhury made. I will be well-voting in favor of the motion. It's important, as many of my colleagues have shared, that any vendor that the city contracts with is credible, and all of our members of our community and city feel comfortable using those services. And that is not the case with this organization that we are considering today. As was also shared, the leadership of the organization came before this body and outside of City Hall and has made public threats that are directly in conflict with the city's stated vision and values of being an equitable and welcoming city. And partnering with a vendor who has made threats to shoot people undermines the city as a whole. And this, I, I would think should be a factor that's disqualifying alone. And it's also confusing to me on how anyone or the administration could think that this is acceptable. It's also frustrating to me that the administration brought this forward and did not consider the negative impacts and harm it would cause to the community members, especially those where it's being proposed to service in Ward five, six, and nine specifically. And again, I was also equally shocked to see that the administration was requesting another year of service from this particular vendor to do these contracts. Something else to keep in mind is the city is currently trying to repair harm to the LGBTQIA community that has fractured a lot of relationships in the past year, specifically the prior administration has fractured relationships with. And just last week, we had a successful trans equity summit that really made it feel as if the city was starting to do that reparative work and make significant progress on repairing those relationships. But then to see the prior administration propose extending contracts to a vendor that is not in alignment with the values of our city and also with that community, it really feels like a huge step backwards in helping us reveal the city's credibility around protecting and uplifting our queer and trans residents in some of our other most vulnerable communities. So for me, you know, the city's values are not negotiable. And as my other colleagues have said, I, I look forward to having further conversations around how we can continue to develop and strengthen the intentionality, the equity focus and distribution focus of, of these resources we're offering through the Neighborhood Safety Department. And I know we've done a significant work around improving vetting and setting high professional standards for some of the other programs, like GBI, YGBI in Minneapolis. I think that needs to happen when it comes to this program, as we've talked about in this body around what standards actually guides the focus of this program, if we're able to allow a vendor like this to somewhat come forward through that process. So I look forward to doing more of that work with my colleagues around how to strengthen our vetting and procurement practices so things like this does not happen, so that we are bringing vendors that are in alignment with our city's values and goals. And it just shows there's still a lot of work to be done. But I do wanna thank my colleague for bringing the motion to deny this, and I'll be supporting that.
And next up, Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Director Harrington, I did wanna ask a question because I've heard other members kind of mention of like this, "How did we get here?" I, I would love to get a better understanding through this data-backed process. Why wasn't these factors considered? Especially since it was such a, a public instance between the Office of Community Safety, interactions with the city council. And then also, I do wanna know, again, like, what happened within this chamber not only impacted council members, but impacted a large number of constituents and leaders within organizations that represent LGBTQIA community members condemning what happened. And I would just like to get to a better understanding of how we got here.
Chair Chavez, Councilmember Chowdhury, thank you for allowing me to answer that question 'cause I hear that as a common concern on the dais. We chose a, a data analysis process that was fair and consistent, that wasn't based on one individual and looked at the work of an entire organization. Because I think that's important to understand, that it's in, the work that's done in these community trauma contracts are done by an organization of people that are not just one person. And so we looked at that work, and what we saw was that Salem, Inc. served 1,502 people since September of 2024. They served a lot of folks on the north side. Most out of...
I, I apologize. I just, I, for me, I have a limited amount of time. The thing that I wanted to get, I do wanna get answered is, why wasn't what occurred considered in this process? This one individual is the leadership of the organization. And I was going to say in my comments, like, I really, really feel for the work that's happening here, and I wanna see more services onto the north side. And I think within the resolution that you'll be getting to the Neighborhood Safety Department, it's requesting reallocation and maybe using the funding to build up other contracts that are serving the north side. And I hope you'll consider that. But one individual is the leader of an organization, and it is deeply, deeply troubling that this person, who has the responsibility of holding the reputation of the organization publicly, speaking for the organization, would put this work in jeopardy. And that's what I want to highlight. This person put this work in jeopardy. He is a spokesperson, the visible leader, the one who has a lot of power and influence and direction. This person is not without power and influence. So I would like to know why that wasn't considered.
Chair Chavez, Councilmember Chowdhury, I will try to keep this brief. We used a database analysis. And what you're suggesting is important. The feelings that folks are, are expressing are important, and I'm not discounting that at all. But that is not what a data analysis is based on. And so we did not choose to do that. What we were balancing was those feelings because we do value every single person in the city of Minneapolis, including people who identify as LGBTQIA+, and that we hear that these services are effective for, for folks on the north side. And we cannot discount their voices as well. And so we chose to balance that by just looking at the data.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. And I think it gives me just like a greater understanding on how we're deciding these contracts because I feel like without including credible threats on people's lives and comments that impact a greater constituency, we're going to fail ultimately to uphold the stated missions, values, and goals of the city of Minneapolis that governs the entire enterprise. And we're, we are completely missing that. And it's making me wonder, should have police reports and complaints been filed to be considered as a data point? Because I, I, I do think it, that if someone is to go on and say, "I, I did not hurt anyone. I did not shoot anyone. However, I will if I have to." Any person that hears that is warranted in putting, putting a, a police report. And that's not something that individuals chose to do here. But in order to be considered a data point, I'd wonder if that's what we needed in order for this contract not to come before us when it is a point of contention, when leadership in other jurisdictions, Hennepin County, the state, are also asking questions to leaders in the city of Minneapolis as this organization is asking for funding. And again, like, I think the responsibility and the weight goes on the leader of this organization who decided to taint the reputation of what sounds like really, really great work. That's gonna be my comments. I just wanted to make that point, and I hope that the feedback from colleagues up here will be considered in conjunction with the resolution that we're gonna take up in terms of what reallocation of this funding could potentially look like should this be denied. There's a lot of leeway within the resolution for Neighborhood Safety to make a determination on how they would like to do that reallocation when we take that up.
All right. I am next on cue. Director Matt Harrington, I'd like to know about your, through the review process and through this, I think you talked about data metrics that led to decisions. What LGBTQIA+ equity lens did staff have in front of them when making these decisions?
Chair Chavez, the, I, I will just go back to what I reiterated. The two-step process was very concrete in that we looked at, did they provide the data that was requested in the contract during their monthly reports? And then secondarily, kind of right sizing to look at the funding. Those were the two metrics that were considered, and I can't speak beyond that.
So there was no LGBTQIA+ equity lens in the data, which is an important aspect in any work that we do in the city enterprise. It's a good data point about how the violence prevention work, violence intervention work, our community trauma response work. I think it is important that we always do racial equity lenses. It's important that we do LGBTQIA+ equity lens. So you're, so you're confirming that there was no such thing in this process?
Correct.
Okay. And I think that's an issue that I have here. When we don't have an racial equity lens or an LGBTQIA equity lens, I don't think that it is necessarily data-driven because if it is not meant for some people, it's gonna have a difficult impact on many of our community members. I think I have an issue with one of these contracts that I'm not gonna be supporting today, that I'm gonna be in favor of Councilmember, Vice Chair Chowdhury's motion to deny, is doing work in Ward nine. And I'm gonna tell you what my residents will tell you. Anti-LGBTQ hate, anti-trans hate, hate that impacts LGBTQI community members, public safety services that do not support our community members, that call out homophobic slurs and language, call out sexist languages and threats. slurs and language, call out sexist languages and threats, does not keep people safe. That is not safety. That is not safety for my residents in Ward Nine. That is not safety for what I believe residents in the city of Minneapolis when we're trying to become a welcoming and inclusive city of Minneapolis. So when I see that one of these contracts is actually doing work in Ward Nine and has taken no accountability for the slurs, for the homophobia, for the sexism, and they're going to do more work in the constituency that I present, which is one of the largest LGBTQ plus populations in the city, that is not safety. That is not protecting people, period. And that is an issue that I have, that I want to bring to the forefront of this conversation, because it's not, if it's not for the people, if it's not meant to keep people safe, and if these services are going to make people feel genuinely very unsafe at a time when we have a federal government that is going after our trans community and our LGBTQIA plus community, how are we going to turn around and say, we're going to do the same thing by promoting bigotry in our city? That is not an inclusive city. And I just wanted to call that out, because that is an issue that I have, especially after hearing the trans people that have been killed in the ward that I present, hearing trans folks on Lake Street getting hate-cried and in downtown Minneapolis. That is an issue that we are facing in our city. And if we are going to create public safety programs, no matter the work that we are doing, and it is not going to create a safer environment for our LGBTQIA plus community members and trans residents, that is not safety. If it's going to create, if we're going to use city tax-funded dollars to create more distrust in our community, more pain and trauma in our community, that is not Community Trauma Response. That's pushing trauma onto community, and that is an issue that I have. So I wanted to at least call that out, because I will not be supporting these two contracts. However, I do hear the concerns about services to north side. I'm glad that a lot of these contracts are going to North Minneapolis. I would vote in favor for more funding for Community Trauma Response programs to go to north side any day, but not at the expense of bigotry and not at the expense of anti-LGBTQ hate, ever. That's just not a line that I will cross. We can promote safety without putting a group of people down and treating them unfairly. So I just wanted to at least mention that out loud. Next up, we have Councilmember Vita.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of points. The first thing is, I wanted to just be clear about the, the Minneapolis zones. There is a very small portion of Ward Four that is covered in the zones in Minneapolis, strategic outreach contracts that are not necessarily the areas in which we need support. The zones that were covered and voted on a couple of weeks ago were West Broadway up to like Glendale and Twenty-Six. None of that is Ward Four covered. So I, I don't feel like that was clear. So I just want to be clear that the problem areas we have in Ward Four, where we need support at, are not covered under a zone on those Minneapolis contracts. And that has always been an issue for me. But to be fair, the services that Minneapolis provides aren't necessarily the appropriate services that we need in those areas. The, the areas need these trauma grant services. And I also just want to say that there are several people that represent the LGBTQ community that work in these, these two grants we're discussing right now that are out on the streets targeting the LGBT community in North Minneapolis. So I know that we keep having a conversation about a person, but these are many people who are working, and they are working to target lots of people. There, there is representation from the LGBTQ community in these two grants, and that work is being led to target certain communities, and, and, and they're doing the work. They're, they're doing it. There are young people out in those communities that need services, and they're doing the work, and they're bringing them in too. So I want to make sure that we speak to that too. This is not like a service where it's like, well, you can't be from this community or do that. There are people that represent that community and that are out there every day, working and offering a service to people. And then the last thing I, I want to say is, you know, I appreciate that my colleagues have thought about this ahead of time about how we reallocate the money, but the, the issue I, I keep having is, I don't think there, there's enough talk around what services are needed, like the specific needs. Neighborhood Health Source is a wonderful program, but they're a clinic. They're in a building and they are waiting for people to come in to them to provide services to them. I still don't know what Black Business Enterprise does over there. And I know A Mother's Love helps out a lot, and they're on the ground, and they're doing some great work in, in North Minneapolis, on, on the north side. And I'm sure, you know, they can figure it out. But I, I think we have to talk about like how we stress out the provider. You can't expect people to just do everything. We need help. We need teams of people. These are women and men and, and people who have their own families and own lives and are now working to capacity. And so to continue to put like, I'm for, I'm going to vote for another group to get the money, to reallocate the funds. But like, one of the things that a lot of these groups are teaching people in these trauma grants is how to take care of themselves, and they need to learn to do the same. So here we are, basically forcing another group to take more money and add more work to their workload. I'm sure they're going to take it. I'm sure they can work it out, but that's a real thing. Like, these are black and brown people from our community who already bear the burden of trauma themselves. They're working through their trauma and helping other people work through trauma too. And so to then say, okay, we're, and, and I mean, like, I don't foresee somebody saying, I don't want the money, but like, the money at what cost? The money at, here's the stress of more insurance, more city contract, more, like, that, that's not how I want people to show up either. I want people to show up happy and willing and comfortable in themselves and in it to be a variety of people. Not all one group of people, not laying the burden of work on one group of people to do everything, because that's not fair to our community either. We've learned that with so many departments in the city, that when people don't take care of themselves, we pay the price for that too at the city of Minneapolis. And I don't want to reinvent that with this program. I think we have a good thing here with these trauma grants. I love that it's specific culturally, neighborhood, addiction, whatever, house, all the things that they're specific to, but like, I don't want to set them up to fail either. And I feel like saying this, saying, let's give it to another group that didn't apply for this, that's probably working in partnership with these other two groups and dispersing the work all over so everyone feels evenly represented and, and feel like, okay, you do your part. Like, these people share the load with each other as to not like overload themselves with everything. Like, I, I can't not say that, because I've talked to them onsite, and they've said, we, we're doing a retreat, we're taking a trip, or we're doing something, or we need to. Like, it would be nice if we could have some relief sometimes from this work, because it's 24/7. This is not easy work. This is not like, this is not sitting up here saying yay and nay. This is literally like, get, taking time away from your family and your children to serve others. And it's a call on their life, like it's a call on ours. They're serious about it, they do it. And so like, for me to say to somebody that they're not deserving of it, it's not okay, it's not cool. And I don't, I don't, like I said, I don't know what we do to repair whatever, like, I, I believe that something has to be done to repair this, because services are needed. But I'm also afraid that a lot of harm with these kinds of decisions are going to be made to the black community overall, and the city is going to pay for that too.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. And I will be supporting the, the motion brought forth by Councilmember Chowdhury. However, I, I am not aware that we have an LGBTQIA plus equity lens formally, as we do the race equity, inclusion and belonging quote lens. So I think it's unfair to try to hold the director accountable to something that does not exist. And if we want to create that as another metric for how we spend dollars in our community, I would certainly be willing to help create that, but we cannot hold people accountable for something that does not exist. Thank you.
All right. So you know, for discussion on the Vice Chair Chowdhury motion to deny 3.9 and 3.11, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Wonsley?
Aye.
Rainville?
No.
Vita?
No.
Ellison is absent. Osman?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Chukta?
Aye.
Palmasano?
No.
Vice Chair Chowdhury?
Aye.
And Chair Chavez?
Aye.
There are eight ayes and three nays.
And the motion to deny those items has been moved to full counsel. The last item is a resolution authored by Vice Chair Chowdhury and Council Vice President Chukta, and I'll pass it to one of the authors to introduce.
Got it. Thank you so much, Chair Chavez. Colleagues, before you, you have a resolution essentially stating our support for the reallocation of the $117,100 of Community Trauma Response Services to be equitably distributed to current contractors who are continuing to provide services through August 31st, 2026, which is what we just voted on. Please take a look at the language. The, the goal with this was really to highlight the equity component and also to give flexibility to the Neighborhood Safety Department to make determinations on where the funding will go, and hope that council members will engage with the Neighborhood Safety Department following this resolution.
We have Councilmember Jenkins on cue.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I guess I would hope that these reallocated funds would be redistributed to groups that are serving in the area where we are dislocating services from, as opposed to quote equitable, equitably distributed amongst all of the vendors.
Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. I know that we have a couple of days until full counsel, and so if there is language changes or things people want to include to this, to bring to full counsel for our final item, I, I think that would be really great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vita.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Chowdhury, for bringing this forward. I think it is important that we make sure that this money stays in North Minneapolis, because it's being taken from North Minneapolis. So I'm happy to work on developing language to make sure that it goes back to where it came from. I, I do want to speak further with Director Harrington about the service area of these groups, because it says specifically Ward's Five, Ward Five, and I'm aware of them being in Ward Four also. So I just want to make sure that we cover the right area when we reallocate the money, but certainly it, it should go back into the areas it's taken out of. So thank you for that, Councilmember Jenkins.
Council President Payne.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I will echo some of the sentiment shared here. You know, we are limited in what we can do in terms of counsel. This is ultimately the administration's authority to decide where these dollars get allocated or reallocated. I just hope that the administration is hearing us very clearly on this dais, that the north side needs these resources, we need to think about the LGBTQ community. And I hope, you know, if people have language to bring this, I hope they do, so that we can like, put a finer point on that. But it is ultimately the administration's decision to decide how that gets allocated. Is that correct, City Attorney?
All right. So this will be moved forward with her recognition to full counsel. However, there is conversations that is going to happen with folks here ahead of Thursday's council meeting. So seeing over discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Any abstention, that has been moved to full counsel. And with that, seeing that we concluded all visits to come before the committee today and hearing no objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned.